I will call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I'll ask if to stand if you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to mention anything that is not on tonight's agenda? And seeing no one else move on. Reports from school community members. Ms. Farley.
Thank you. This year marks 60 years of the Sagem Mascot. So Mr. Breen, Mr. Branigan, and student council and myself have been trying to get some word out there. And on the 21st, which is the homecoming football game, they would like to do a special ceremony that night. So I know Mr. Breen is working on some things with Mr. Branigan and in-house. But John Fine at Pop Tops has also created a little store to sell some rally towels. So I've been trying to get that out on social media, but I know Carolyn and I spoke about it. And then maybe after tonight, we're going to try to do a little more, a little more, you know, out there, get it out there. So Mr. Fine did extend the store until next week so that we can try to sell those more. And we will have some for sale at the game as well. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? I just wish to thank everyone who attended special town meeting on Monday night and appreciate them coming to this building. And with that, next item on our agenda was going to be the student rep, but Nate is out. He got hurt playing soccer and we wish him well and hope he recovers nicely. I've been in contact with him and he said he's doing well. I know he hasn't missed much school, so we're at least happy for that. Next up is reports from the co-presidents. So welcome, ladies.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. We don't really have a lot to talk about this evening. We did want to say that we are eager and ready to start the negotiations at this point for the ESP and cafeteria contracts whenever you guys are. We have gone through part of the contract that we are going to send back some edits and we should be done with that soon. So we're excited to have this contract wrapped up, printed, and out to everybody soon.
I just want to thank the PTA in our building. They have done a wonderful job that we had mentioned last time on our teachers' room. They are looking for some additional furniture to put in there and I guess they're just waiting on it. So it's just going to add to the comfortable atmosphere that we're, you know, allowed to sit and have lunch and just relax, which is a nice upgrade from what it was. So we're really, really happy about that. And the other thing is I also want to commend our PTA for observing National Custodians' Day, which I guess was this past week. And, you know, our custodians are great. In all of our buildings, they're great. They work really, really hard. We recognize it, the teachers definitely recognize it, so we want to thank them as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the presidents, co-presidents? Sina, thank you, ladies. We appreciate your coming.
Thank you.
With that, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Tonight I have two items to present and I'll start with Mr. Paul Branigan to talk about NIASC. And while he gets set up, if I'd invite you up, what I wanted to do was just talk with the community a little bit about what NIASC is and what this process means. NIASC stands for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. This is a board that has created a process for accreditation. And this is something that most schools, most public high schools in Massachusetts participate in. Accreditation is something that colleges look for. It is something that makes us competitive with other area high schools. It also ties into property values because schools that are accredited put forward a certain type of product. So Mr. Branigan and company are here tonight to talk about the process at Middleborough High School. But what I wanted to share, it's not very dissimilar from the auditing process that the district goes through, through DESE. But NIASC is not part of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's a standalone group and it is a mixed process, much like auditing is, where this group reviews documents and evidence that the school would submit and they conduct onsite visits and interviews and discussion with school personnel. So they're here tonight to talk about that process that we're kind of constantly in process with it, so we'll be talking a little bit more. But what I wanted to share is recently, a couple of years ago, and in response to feedback from area high schools, NIASC shifted the model to what's now called a vision for learning. And this process has multiple pieces that include a self-reflection, which is where the school looks internally and says, what are we doing right? What are we not doing right? They conduct surveys, they consult with parents and families. They then do a collaborative conference where they're talking with the NIASC board about the review of that information. They develop a school growth plan, which is really a detailed list of steps for things that need to occur. The school then engages in a reflective summary. How are we doing? Are we meeting those goals? And then lastly, they ultimately come up with personalized decennial accreditation, which is a process that we do every 10 years, but steps for everything in between. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Branigan and his team to talk to us about the process here at MHS.
Thank you, Mrs. Lyons. Good evening, everyone. We begin the process again. So as Mrs. Lyons had shared, a lot of the changes in the accreditation process. And the last time our school went through this was in 2013. So in the spring of 2013, we had our 10-year visit. And then from there, we were given our report and it was quite a report of work that needed to be done. And just last spring, if you remember, we came before you to share that we had finally met all of the requirements that came from that accreditation report. So now we're ready to begin the next process again. We would have had our visit in 2023, but with COVID, they bumped all of the schools out. So we are now in line for 2025. Tonight, we're going to just share with you really how the system works because there are many times you'll hear me coming before you and sharing what we're doing and all of that. This process is really quite unique because it is really a faculty, school, community-driven process. And my role as the sitting principal is to really be really the co-pilot. And so I'm there working with the team of really what direction do we need to go? What do we see? And it really is something that is created and designed and really kind of captained by the faculty. And so we have three members of our staff who, you know, said we would love to be a part of this in a real leadership way that will serve as the accreditation coordinators and that these three people are going to work to really guide this journey from now until we end in October of 2025. We already have all of our dates. As Mrs. Lyons had shared, we have a collaborative consult visit, which we know the fact that the team will share with you tonight. That is scheduled for November of next year. And our 10-year visit that will happen, where we will actually have the team come that from NIASC, that is going to happen in October of 2025. So they're already, we're queued, we're ready to go. And so now begins the good work of really doing a reflection process of where we are at. I can tell you, before I turn it over to our accreditation team, as always, I think any school is a work in progress. You're never done with the work of building and remodeling and all of the things you need to do in the day-to-day of a school. However, when we go back to 2010 and 2011 and all of that, getting ready for the process then, we were in a really very, very different place. And so I think as we're beginning this process for this next accreditation cycle, I think we will find, and just in the immediacy, that with what we are looking to meet and the standards in which we need to align, that we're in a very, very different place, which is kind of exciting because the work is really going to become really authentic work compared to the last time where we found ourselves in this kind of spiral to some degree of like, where do we begin? And so, which is really quite exciting to be able to do it in a way where we have systems in place to now do it. So without further ado, I want to introduce two out of the three members of the accreditation that who as will serve as the accreditation coordinators. And I thought it was important for you as a school committee, for the superintendent, as well as our school community, to know who, how this process works and how we begin because it will officially begin next week and we'll explain to you what we mean by that. So I want to introduce to you, first one is Justin Pittsley, who is our music teacher here at the high school. He's unable to join us tonight, but he is one of the accreditation coordinators. I wanted to use Norman Reynolds, who is an English teacher here at the high school, as well as Cassandra Lemieux, who is also an English teacher. So they're going to share with you and their role as the accreditation coordinators are really what this beginning of the process means and how our school community will become involved. So I'm just grateful for the work that this team's doing, has begun to do and has been working on since last spring.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Cassandra Lemieux and like Mr. Branigan said, I am an English teacher here and one of the main coordinators for our NIASC process. So tonight, we're going to go through about kind of like where we've been, what we've done up to this point and our future goals as well. So this slide is just introducing our core group of people. So there's Justin, me, and Norm, and then part of our steering committee. And as you can tell, we try to hit almost everybody we could to really make this faculty-focused. So previously in the ask, it really just focused on the accreditation visit and checking off boxes and looking at those recommendations that we received. And it's a little different this time around. There's a lot more of a self-reflection piece in focusing on our story as a community. What makes Middleborough High School a Middleborough High School? And we get that feedback from faculty, students, and the community as a whole. And as Mr. Branigan mentioned, in fall 2023, we start the collaborative visit as well as the accreditation visit in the fall of 2025. So we've done a lot of work so far. We're really proud of it, too. It's been a lot. So last spring, we were selected, we volunteered for this role. It's something that the three of us have talked about and are really passionate about. And we began to assemble our steering committee and our self-reflection team. We looked at a survey results of faculty who were interested in this process. And from there, we tried to build a team where, like I mentioned earlier, that everyone is represented. This summer, we worked and we came up with a process design to really help a timeline focus. I don't know if you know much about English teachers, but we like to be organized. So we made sure we had a clear timeline in place so that when we came back in the fall, we knew exactly how we wanted to start. So what's happening now is we just had our first meeting with the full steering committee and we're prepping on that work for part one, which is the self-reflection. That's a really large part of this process because it's looking at our growth, what are we doing really well at, and what are some areas we need to focus on? And what's actually going to start next week is a survey that's going to be administered to the community, staff, and students. And looking ahead on this process, after we go through the survey reflections, we're going to begin collecting evidence from school and begin writing our narrative to send to NIASC. Who are we as a school and community? And from there, we'll establish our goals and vision to lead into our visit in the fall. And like I mentioned earlier, we really tried to be purposeful in who we chose to be on our self-reflection team. So if you take a look at the slide, we have department chairs and we have people from every department in the school who wanted to be part of this. We believe that that will really help with our communication end of it as well, since every department is representative, so that we can bring the information back to the departments and vice versa, because we know how fond emails are. Sometimes they get lost, you know? So we're all there, we're all representative, we all have a part. And I'm going to hand it over to Norm to go over the survey timeline.
All right. Good evening. So one of the first pieces in this entire process for us is starting to look back and starting that self-reflection process of, like Cassandra said, where are we as a school? What are our areas where we can celebrate? And where can we also see that we need maybe a little more growth, right? There's always room for growth. And the first thing in that process is starting to get feedback from all of the stakeholders. And we'll do that through surveys of not only the students, but the faculty as well and our larger high school community. So on the slide, we've kind of outlined our timeline for those surveys. These are surveys that come from the ask. They are ready to go for us. And in just a minute, we'll kind of talk about what these surveys are and kind of what they're not, what you can expect. But here's the timeline. Like Mr. Branigan said, we're looking at kind of next week, after the long holiday weekend, to start to send that out to the community. We've targeted kind of a two-week timeframe to get survey responses from them. For the faculty, we have a faculty meeting on October 13th. So we've kind of targeted that date to get feedback from the faculty and staff. And then for the students, we're looking at during school on October 18th. And we've been purposeful in how we're going to roll that out. We've targeted block three, where all the students will take it at the same time. And that just kind of gives flexibility for the teachers. It's the longer block. It has lunch in that block as well. So it kind of gives flexibility in terms of when they roll that out with the students. We also were purposeful with the community survey going out first. If members of the community would like to see the survey and kind of get a feel for the types of questions that are asked, they'll see that survey first. Like I said, after the long weekend, and then the students won't take the survey until a week later. The questions that are on each of these surveys are very similar. Obviously, the wording's a little different in terms of the target audience, but they're really looking at all aspects of the student experience. Whereas the community one might just say, your students' experience in X, Y, or Z. On here, we kind of have a sampling of some of the questions. Like I said, it really is the range of the student experience. So looking at leadership opportunities in the school, looking at resources that are available to the students, you know, mistakes being part of the learning process. So it really covers the whole range of the experience for the students. And this is just our first kind of ability to get some feedback from all of these stakeholders and start to look at areas for celebration and for growth.
And that's all we have for you tonight. And we'll be sure to check in as we continue throughout this process. Like we mentioned before, this is the beginning stages, part one, the self-reflection. So this is where we're going to start gathering all this feedback and data to craft our report.
And just one item about the surveys is that this is a survey that comes directly from NIASC, as Norman had shared. So this is a common starting point for every school to go through this process. And then what will happen is is that once we close the, or tell NIASC that we're done, so once we have all three stakeholder groups in play and completed, then what we do is we'll receive the data back from NIASC. And then that really begins the process of our writing. So we'll be, the self-reflection team will then take all of that data when they send it back to us and say, all right, folks, here's what, here's where all the stakeholders are falling. This is what our families are saying, this is what our faculty is saying, and staff, and this is what our students are saying. And then it really allows for us to unpack all of that and say, all right, here's where we feel like we've got some great responses and here are some areas that we did not. And then that begins the writing. And the goal, if my memory serves, is that we have to have our self-reflection report done by May of 2023, submitted into NIASC, so that way they have time to do their work of review. And then they will establish that team that will come to us in next November. And the hope is, is that we'll be coming back to you because we have made this a commitment from the last 10 years of making sure this was always on our review, that it would be important for us to be coming back to you as a committee to give you updates on things. And that would be part of that goal. For us, when we're invited to come back or when we feel we're at a place where it's important to come back and share information with you, it'd be working with the accreditation coordinators to be able to come in and do that. So any questions you may have for any of us?
First, having gone through the accreditation process before, both here and in my last district, it's a very interesting process and this seems to be sort of a fundamental change from what they've done in the past. I will also say that the last one in 2013 was probably the longest process in the history of accreditations because what had happened was, just so everyone knows, we essentially passed with flying colors every aspect of the accreditation with the exception of facilities. And rather than render a decision, they extended the accreditation while we were in the process of building a new facility. They could have chosen to choose, make a recommendation, but they didn't. They could because essentially when they put out the report was right when we started that town meeting to ask about building a new high school. And so they would, Paul would constantly have to update them about the process and constantly follow, you know, they had a list of questions about the process and where we were at. And they, they continued to allow the process to go on because we're in the midst of building a new facility. And then when we finally had the facility built, they rendered essentially a positive verdict saying that we had met all the criteria. So, and I also want to point out to everybody that this building was built on the idea of what we need to do to pass an accreditation process, that everything in this building is designed and developed to adhere to the guidelines that the accreditation process wants us to do because we want to be accredited and we don't want to be in a category that's problematic. I will say to people, too, one thing that I think is important is there are criteria that you'd be surprised that certain high schools, for example, Boston Latin is in a problematic criteria because they don't have a gym. And they don't pass at 100% every year because they've never had a gym. It's been the history of Boston Latin. And that's the reason that they give for that. So there are pieces to this sort of that go on. But I really appreciate, and I know from building this building, you know, part of the process was Paul had to put together an education plan, both from to Masva, which is the Massachusetts School Assistant Fund, but it had to be designed on what he was planning to do for this accreditation project because it wouldn't have made sense if they didn't match. So I do want to let everyone know that. So I appreciate your efforts. I know how hard it is. I also know that it's all sort of extra and what you have to go through. And it's very meaningful, obviously, because colleges want your high school accredited for certain places the kids want to go. So I want to thank you all for stepping up because it's not, it's not about doing it for the high school, it's about doing it for the students. So I appreciate that.
Other questions or comments from people? Mr. O.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. It sounds like quite the process, but just a little look at the sample of questions that you included there. Sounds like it's some really important, like identity building, like self-reflection type stuff, which seems really great. I was curious, I have just a few quick questions, I think, but I think I heard you say 2013 was the last time that we had to do this. And I heard the chair just mentioned that we kind of had an extension, but is there a, is there like a, one like overall score of some kind that we get? Or do they always present the score in multiple categories?
So in the, when we were in, when we went through the accreditation in 2013, there were seven standards that we had to meet. And so in each standard, you're giving recommendations. So out of the entire process, we had probably about 68 recommendations that we had to meet. And a lot of that, to Mr. Young's point, was really revolving around the facility and what we were doing to ensure a robust learning experience for students in a building that had a lot of limitation at the time. And so we then had to begin the work of addressing those recommendations because that's part of that. So they will give you a rating and say that this is based upon your meeting these recommendations. So in 2015, we had a two-year report too, where we had to be able to demonstrate where we are in meeting these 68 recommendations. And then in 2017, we had another, no, 2018, excuse me, we had the five-year report that was due. And that's a huge chunk of that five-year one because you need to be able to show them you have come this far in meeting these recommendations that they have. And then the commission will send back a review to you to say, we're really pleased about this, but we really need to see this in the next one. And then in between the two-year report and the five-year report, there's a series of special progress reports, they call them, where we would have due dates, where we would have to show the evidence of what we've been working on. So in 2013, the minute NIASC had finished, we mobilized our NIASC accreditation team. And that team had been together literally every year, we may reform a little bit, but it really, under the leadership of Peter Wilbur, who is now retired, he really ensured the fact that this steering committee, this follow-up committee, maintained itself for the last eight years. And so we were able to submit every single accreditation recommendation with the evidence of completion. And so now we begin the process again. What is so different, which I think is so wonderful, is that it's no longer about, to Cassandra's point in the beginning of really, it's the checking off the boxes. It's really now that we are saying as a school, this is what we're really proud of and this is who we are. But it's also saying, these are the things that we've identified that we really think we need to put the energy into and the work into. And then what NIAS does, this collaboration visit, collaborative visit that will happen in 2023, they then built the plan for us to say, all right, this is what you feel you need. Now we're holding you accountable to get there. And so when they come back again in 2025, we have to be able to demonstrate that we have taken all of these things that we have seen out of these surveys that are going to be coming in through our self-reflection process to be able to then begin to build the capacity. So when they come here in 2025 for that visit, then it's going to be the fact that this is who we are and this is where we've been and this is where we want to go, which I think is going to be a very, very different story than what we did in the old process where you had to be able to demonstrate this litany of things based upon criteria that they gave to every single school. And now it becomes really every school gets to tell their story of what really fits their school, which I think makes such a difference. And if I may, one of the big pieces of this that's not part of this team, there's an entire other group of teachers that are working on what is called the Vision of the Graduate, which is really the beginnings of really who we are as a school. But more importantly, eventually, it would be something that we would be bringing to Mrs. Lyons and the rest of the school district to say, the vision of a graduate doesn't begin in ninth grade. It really begins when that student hits the doorstep of a back. And so for that, it becomes something where it's such exciting work that we had two days of training last week, that team. And I got to tell you, it was such an unbelievable conversation, talking about really, what does teaching and learning look like? What do we want for our students? Who do we want them to be when they walk out of this door on their day of graduation? And it becomes really part of this larger process of really who we are as a school. So we're really excited to share with you over the next many, you know, months and over through the next few years of actually what this process is, who we are right now, and more importantly, where do we want to be?
One other thing, too, that I think's important is, as you said, Paul, a lot of the recommendations or issues they raised were around facilities. Paul couldn't go back to them and say, hey, we're building a new high school, so I'll deal with that whenever it's built. He had to address some of the issues as soon, to show he was still processing even why. A perfect example for me is the library. We completely revamped the library a lot based on ideas and pieces that they picked up. And that's why, for lack of better terms, we went to the pub-style seating and put in more electrical outlets for kids to plug in and charge. And so it was, it wasn't that you could just wait. And so it was, it wasn't that you could just wait. It was that you had to show them that you're working to make the current facilities upgraded to what they had asked for, while also working on a new process. So I think that's important.
I just had one more question. And by the way, thank you for that answer. That's, it sounds like incredible process. I'm excited to hear more from you guys in the future about it. I just wanted to know, speaking of all the work, it sounds like it is quite a lot of work. And I was just curious how the accreditation coordinators are chosen.
So, well, we, they really, I shared it with a faculty meeting about that we were beginning the process of the vision of the graduate and there was some information that we needed to get from our faculty. And there was the beginning of the process, which begins with this mobilization of this vision of the graduate work that we have been doing. And so we were now at the place where in the spring, I was invited to an accreditation meeting in April of 20, of this year, of 2022, and that's where we officially began. So I was invited into this meeting with NIESK. I was given all the information we needed to begin. And the first step was going to the faculty and saying to them, all right, folks, we're, get ready. We begin our journey together for this process. And that's where I invited people to really think about where they wanted to find their entry point. And it was asking people about being the accreditation coordinators to on the steering committee, to being on the self-reflection committee, where did they see themselves? And really that Justin and Cassandra and Norman all said that they really wanted to take this leadership role. We met before the school year ended and it became something where it was clearly evident that they really wanted to see this journey through and really, really guide the staff. And what I think is so good about the process, it's not me doing it. It's really colleagues with colleagues doing it together. And I think that's really where this process is so different than other maybe audits and things that it really becomes from within the faculty of really owning this is who we are as a school, which I think is quite compelling.
Thank you. And it sounds like hopefully what is gained in career growth and, and leadership experience hopefully is worth the, it sounds like an incredible amount of work. So thanks to you guys for stepping up and doing that.
I do want to add too, it's not just about possible career growth. It, it really comes down to why we're here as teachers and it's the kids, right? We want what's best for them and help prepare them for their future. And we know this is a great school and awesome community. And we really just want to reflect that for everybody. So yes, it's a great opportunity and I'm glad to be here, but it all comes down to the kids in the end.
I just wanted to say a couple of words before you ended for this evening. I first wanted to say thank you to everybody who's really spent their time on this, on this particular endeavor, including Mr. Brannigan, who never talks about how much he works. But what strikes me about this process, which is very Middleborough, is that instead of taking a process that could be very check-the-box, compliance-driven, and, you know, let's get the task done, once again, Middleborough chooses to take this process and really keep running and introspectively look at our practice, you know, through the, through the eyes of students and say, how can we improve? And that's the magic that is Middleborough. And I wanted to commend you for making that choice. That is something I'm proud to say happens a lot around here and I'm not surprised. And then finally, I'll be using this data in my entry plan. So I wanted to just reassure the committee, as part of my entry plan, I'm looking at many different forms of data. But this data will be particularly important because it's very high school specific. And rather than recapture or ask our families and students the very same questions, I'm not going to do that. What I'll do is rely on this team and my involvement with this team to highlight those trends and I'll bring those to you just so that you can feel like, okay, well, was that standalone information or was that considered? So I wanted to just offer that. And that was it. I thank the three of you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And thank you for your help and efforts in doing this.
And with that, I will turn to the budget calendar. Mrs. Sarah Hickey is going to present out on that.
Thank you, Superintendent Lyons. And thank you, school committee members, for being here to listen to the excitement of budget season. I feel a little awkward. Our table is, is facing the chairs and not you yet. I'm speaking to you tonight. So forgive me for being sideways. I can, I can speak to you with absolute complete confidence of what the budget season looks like in Middleborough with Bob Noons as a town manager. As we know, Bob is retiring and so there are some big question marks that I don't have answers. So I am going to talk about the budget process in, from three different views. We have the school, the town, and the state only a little bit. I'm only going to talk a little bit about the state. And, but I don't have the exact timeline yet because the part of the budget process where I interact with the town is, is a big question mark at the moment. So as thing, as things become more set in stone, I will update the budget calendar and post it on the budget portion of the Middleborough Public Schools Business Office page for anybody that's interested in, in looking at the budget calendar. So I'm going to speak in some generalisms. And I'm going to talk about early October and late October and, you know, in months in general terms. So in early October, I'm going to meet with the leadership team just to go over this calendar that I'm talking with you about tonight. And then on October 26th, I'm going to distribute the budget detail sheets to the department heads, directors, directors, principals, the people that, that have portions of the budget. On December 19th, the budget detail sheets are going to be due back to me. And then in the end of December, in the first few weeks of January, I work diligently to aggregate all the information that comes from the 18, 19, 20 sources where I get information and put it all together into one budget spreadsheet for the district. At the end of January, the budget subcommittee and Zeke and Teresa, I believe that is you this year, the budget subcommittee starts meetings where we will go over the budget, the proposed budget. And then we will meet with each of the principals and directors individually about what they have requested. That process takes about two weeks. And then in early February, if you, I like to call it callbacks. A principal might request something in their presentation, but you want to talk further about it. So in early February, we will do any callbacks for anybody else that you want to talk about, anything else you want to talk about. And then once the budget is finalized in early February, then I start putting together the presentation for the budget hearing, which has traditionally been at the end of February. In, so the budget hearing is to present the school budget to the school committee for acceptance. Then in March, the budget, typically in March, the budget is presented to the select board for acceptance. And then at April town meeting, again, the townspeople have the opportunity to vote on the school budget. That's looking at everything from the school lens. From the town lens, typically the town manager is going to meet with all of the department heads, so Superintendent Lyons, Fire Chief, Police Chief, all, all the people in charge of town budget pieces. And then there's a process where we integrate our budget into the town's budget. I, again, I don't know the timeline for that, but it follows along the same lines of what we're working on. So somewhere around January-ish, I don't know when, the governor has their proposed budget. And that's when things start to finalize at the town level. And that's when things finalize at our level. It passes down to us. So in possibly in Feb, January, February, the town managers can be working with the finance committee on budgets. And then in March, again, the selectmen meet with the department heads. So I will present the budget to the select board, the fire chief, the police chief. Each of the department heads will present their budget for any questions by the select board. So those are the three different views of the budget, what happens on the school level, the town level, which is a big question mark. But we do know that the town will have a budget and it will have it. It'll go through the process of putting the budget together and getting it approved by all the different places. And then the governor, while I'm working on all of this, the governor is doing the same thing for all of his budget. Her, their, whomever the governor is in January. Any questions for me about this?
Thank you for all the diligence. And I just hope that we have a town manager that is as collaborative as Bob Noons has been and the board of select, the select board, of course, as well. So thanks and fingers crossed.
Thank you.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the Middleborough High School Building Project Report. We haven't, we meet next week, so there hasn't been any meetings on that. Things are still under budget. Did anyone have any particular questions about anything?
Yeah, so I had a question. So I've heard that some of the facilities, or facilities, but one of the classrooms, the art department in particular, doesn't proper tables that were requested. Is that something?
So the tables, and Mr. Brannigan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. When this project was, you know, being designed, the tables that were ordered did not come in. They sent the wrong tables. Is that correct, Mr. Brannigan?
We ordered new tables for that space, but like everything else, it is just taking an exorbitant amount of time to come in. So the tables that are going in, in the art room, one of the art rooms is waiting for the tables. The tables they have in there are workable and they're fine for now. But long-term, those tables are not really the most appropriate. They're not as durable as of a surface. And they wanted more of like what you would see in a science lab, that like epoxy top. On the other side of the art studio, those tables have come in and they were fine. The one issue we had is that we need to get extensions that needed to be ordered for the legs. What we found when we moved in this building, like everything else, is that there was furniture that was here, furniture that we were waiting on. So we are now in the final stages of those little elements in the building that we're just waiting for those final pieces to come in. We were supposed to get those tables delivered at the end of August for the art rooms and they just haven't come in yet. So I know it's on the docket to come in.
I would like to point out too, again, each and every room, the material that was going to that room was signed off by the teacher of that room. And so a lot of times what we encountered was people would sign off for things and then other things were, were sent to other rooms. And people would say, oh, those would fit better in my room. I didn't realize like how that would fit into a room like that. So we did have some changing and some order redevelopment after things had gotten here.
And those tables in particular, we do in this building, all of the teachers, as you know, designed and gave input on the spaces. So those tables, when our consultant was working with us, those tables made a lot of sense. But then when we got them, it really didn't create the flexibility in the room that we were hoping for. So the tables that are coming are going to have a lot more mobility to them, like you would see in a science lab. And then what we're doing is, is the tables that are in that art studio right now are already earmarked to go to other places. So we have some earmarked for potentially the MyLab. There's some places that we're going to be putting them in the student council office. So because of the durability of the tables, we know that they're going to be utilized somewhere else in the building because they particularly have furniture that really wasn't in hindsight really appropriate for the space. So we're just waiting to do kind of the great jockeying of the, of the furniture when it finally arrives.
I was, I would love to keep informed on, on any of the equipment that hasn't come in yet. Just because how, you know, saying we're under budget is great, but I would like to at least hear some of the particulars in this, in this meeting.
No, that's cool. What we've done a lot, I mean, you can look, the agendas for all those meetings are online. One of the things that is online too is change orders. And so over the course of time, we have added pieces and subtracted pieces that went through looking for various, you know, this, this is a perfect example. We would have, we would be set for a particular thing and then something else would be like, oh, we prefer to, somebody would be, we prefer to do that. So we made change orders on that. And those change orders are listed in all the agendas. So. And there, to be honest with you, Zeke, there's a lot. The change orders that we've gone through from beginning to end, probably, I'm gonna say probably what number, about five or 600, Paul? Yeah.
Easy.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the building? As we move along, we will slowly but surely be done with the building committee, which would be a dream sometime. Next up on our agenda is just a reminder, the annual conference is November 2nd through 5th. Chair, when I did a motion to accept the consent agenda? Discussion, the only thing on the consent agenda are a list of fundraisers, the Mary Kay Good Harvest Dance. There's a staff wellness and resource fair donation request. This is similar to what happens in, when we did the new staff orientation. Approval minutes and approval warrants. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We do have facility surplus. We're required to allow it as surplus. It's for two pieces. It is for desks from the old high school, which is, you've got a picture in your packet and a Kadoba tractor. Chair, entertain a motion to declare those surplus. For discussion, a couple of things. One is that I think is important. One of the things that Paul and Hutch had done was in the old building, a lot of, we allowed the historical commission to wander through the building and pick out various items that made sense. And in fact, this summer, they had a Middleborough High School sort of presentation through, in the historical wing. These desks are not historical. That was a question I asked to make sure. And they have seen the desks. So these are just old desks. And the tractor, it's my understanding that everything goes through town first. So the parking wreck may want to pick up the tractor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I just have a couple of things for everybody. It's sort of, one thing that we normally do, and that is, our next meeting is 10/20. But in November, we usually don't have the first meeting in November because that's the conference and the superintendent and I will be away. So we'll just have the one meeting, 11/17. And the second piece that is not necessary for now, but, you know, part of our conversation with the superintendent through her interview and part of a thing that's going on this year with school, if you've, if you've seen it, is about self-care and making sure that people are taking care of themselves. And self-care is not just about, you know, yourself, what about your family and things like that. And so the superintendent informed me that in the beginning of next year, the first Thursday of the months are her children's concert performances for her school. She had asked for one-off. That, that makes no sense to me. I don't want parents to miss the opportunities to see their kids perform. So I'll be sending out a note to everybody about looking for an alternative date that week. You know, we'll move it to a Wednesday or a Tuesday, whatever works for everybody, just to, to allow her to attend. No, no, exactly. So we'll work it, we'll work out what we need to work out. And that, that's for January and February at least. So we'll go from there. And the other thing is next, just so everyone knows, the next meeting, one of the major items that we're going to talk about is school improvement plans because we delayed those for the new superintendent to be on. So those will be ready for next meeting. So that'll be a bigger discussion. So with that, the chair entertained a motion to adjourn. Paul, please.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I just wanted to call out one of the, or the donation that we got. I learned a little bit about, and just so the public knows, if you see at the bottom of your agenda, it says donation, small kindness project, $100 each. of your agenda, it says donation, Small Kindness Project, $100 each to the Berkland School and the Mary Kay Good School. The group wishes to remain anonymous as individuals, but I was able to talk to one of the group, and I just think it's a cool thing, wanted to just draw a little attention to it. Again, it's called the Small Kindness Project. It is a group of 12 local women that started about four years ago, mostly from Middleborough. I think they said one from Carver, one from Lakeville. They, each month, they meet and they take $25 out of their own pockets, and they pull it together, and they give small gifts around in kind of the vein of small kindness. But in the words of the person I spoke to, the world needs more kindness, and they're not looking to run a massive grant program, they just want to do these little nice things. They've done things like, I know that they've worked with members of our school community before, I know that they work with Mr. Brannigan, they've done senior prom tickets, shoes for athletes, they've helped families pay for oil, they work with the veterans groups here in town, gift cards to local restaurants, and things like that. And this donation, they gave $100 each to the Berkland and the MKG, and it was for a combination of literacy month and reading month, September and October. And I just thought it was a really cool thing, so I wanted to thank them and just tell the public about this cool little group. That's it.
Thank you. Anything else? With that, Chair Entertainee motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the day.